PM, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley? Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor and Mayor Smith?
Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hanley and Pro Tem Mayor? Commissioner Davis?
I move we excuse Commissioner Hanley due to family reasons and Commissioner Mayor due to military service.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzal?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I have no announcements this evening, so we will move on to boards and committees. We have one reappointment. Do we have a motion on this reappointment? Pro Tem, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Hill?
I move that we reappoint Jamie Weider to the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2025.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I second the motion.
Pro Tem, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hill. It's because Pro Tem Mayor is missing and Commissioner Hill used to be Pro Tem, so I'm starting to look over this way. Commissioner Hill? Do you have any discussion on that?
I am really glad that Jamie, Ms. Weider, is stepping up. She's been doing a fantastic job, really adds a lot to our arts community, and I'm glad she's continuing to help us.
Any additional discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
The only point to add is I think it's a fine appointment. She will do us proud.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Up next, we have our first public comment session of the evening. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Go ahead and approach the center podium if you'd like to make a public comment. Anyone for public comment?
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'm speaking tonight about the desirability of the city of Marquette reviewing its littering law between now and its next meeting and to update its ordinance to increase the fines for littering, to double the fines for littering for anything thrown from a vehicle, and to also allow members of the public to obtain evidence of littering and share it with the police department, with or without part of the fine going to the member of the public who does that. I don't want people chasing down other people saying, A, I saw you throw that in the street, but our best eyes and ears on littering come from the people who are out and about. I say this not because I'm someone who's bored with my life and needs to start a controversy. I'm saying it because the littering is worse than it ever has been. And I say that because I'm out and about more now that I have a dog. And I used to say that most of the littering was in the municipal sections and in the retail sections and in the bars and the places where people congregate. And I went walking this morning on Pine Street, which is the residential area, and filled my pocket with a variety of litter, including cigarette butts. And if it's any comfort, I can tell that some of it is tourist-based because nobody in the state of Michigan throws away a 10-cent can. We simply don't do it. Even if we don't collect them for ourselves, we collect them for some group that's collecting cans. And I'm finding more and more of those cans. Plastic is ubiquitous, but just the sheer amount of litter, we're going to be inundated with it. And we're trying to improve our water to the lake, stormwater, and I took a video of a bunch of water in a rainstorm, and it was mostly oil and gas mixed in with the water. It is not just one thing. And the city of Marquette has a responsibility to its residents and to its visitors to maintain a safe reality. And so I'm recommending that in the next, between now and the next session we have, that the city attorney be directed to review the ordinance, to update the fines, to double the fines for things thrown from vehicles. That is a safety hazard. And in this city, two years ago on the Fourth of July, some guy was driving up and down Front Street throwing lit firecrackers at anything that was in their front yard. I have the Facebook posts on it. And when he was tracked down and caught, all he got was a fireworks violation, not assault with a deadly weapon, which I believe throwing a lit firework at somebody should be. So I'm asking politely and professionally that the city review these ordinances with a view towards upgrading the fines before the Fourth of July holiday, when it's too late. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
Two brief public comments. John Taylor, 2050 Presque Isle Avenue, apartment 26, Marquette. One, I would like to second Ms. Brum's approval of tightening up at least the fireworks ordinance. During said time, that also happened on Presque Isle Avenue. My wife is treated for PTSD, partly because in her youth, where her and her Jewish family lives, skinhead gangs would harass them by throwing lit fireworks in their car and window. We had a firecracker connect with our bedroom window during that, and that took me about a good four and a half hours to calm down. That was psychologically traumatizing, and I would like to see enforcement tightened. The second, but more driving, as we would move toward the public hearings, I would again make a squeaking hinge squeak louder in saying, as we work toward the capital improvement plan for 2027 through 2029 to include affordable and/or subsidized housing. This is heavy on my mind because today I ran into a friend of mine that works at Walmart that was recently rendered homeless because he could not afford the rent in this city but couldn't really afford to move on. And I told him I would be speaking about this tonight. He actually told me in no uncertain terms not to. And he told me that my addressing you here like this was comparable to the January 6th incident, that I was kicking and screaming, his words, over a lost cause. And he expressed to me that he thought change for economic conditions of people like him could only come from true revolution. I, as a man of faith, abhor and reject violence in any form. But something that became clear to me today is that the people this commission represents have lost both faith and trust in public institutions of any form, a trust that needs to be rebuilt. Thus far, I've heard a lot about past promises, and indeed, Marquette has invested a great deal in its past. I would encourage this commission to invest a great deal in Marquette's present and to address a problem that is mounting quickly before it snowballs. I'm asking you tonight to please, please prove my friend wrong. I would love to be right about this for a change, and that's not just my know-it-all streak raising. Please take this under consideration in your capital improvement plan. I would thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Just a reminder for the public that our chance to respond to public comment is at the end of the meeting during Commissioner comments or through an agenda item. If there's no additional public comment, public comment is now closed. We have three presentations this evening. Up first, we have a presentation by our Chief of Police, Ryan Grimm, on some lifesaving efforts. Chief Grimm, I will let you take it away over at the side podium here. Absolutely. Yep, go ahead and take as many pictures as you'd like.
This is my first presentation as chief, and I couldn't be happier for the circumstances, or at least the outcome of the circumstances. On May 18th at 2:00, a vehicle caught fire on South McClellan Avenue and it pulled into the M Bank parking lot. As emergency responders were making their way to the scene, dispatch advised that the vehicle was fully engulfed in flames and the driver was unable to get out due to a medical condition. Luckily, these three brave men, Chad Devonshire, Ross Christensen, and Todd Barr, were nearby and they saw the fire. Emergency personnel were not yet on scene, and they recognized that quick action was the only way to save the driver. They set aside concern for their own personal safety, worked together, and pulled her out of the burning vehicle. They saved a woman's life that day. Occasionally, life puts you in situations that define what kind of person you are. These three men proved that they are true heroes. Tonight, I wanted to thank them and publicly recognize them for their actions. So I've got some tokens of our appreciation tonight, some certificates for Ross. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate your efforts.
Appreciate it.
And Chad.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
And Todd. Really appreciate it. Very happy you guys were there.
Well, thank you, Chief Grimm, and thank you to the three of you. It's certainly heartwarming to hear a story of such bravery and courage in a difficult time. Thank you all. All right, next on the agenda, we have item three, Signs of Spring: Salamander Days Exhibit, and we will have Tina Moran, our Arts and Culture Manager, kick it off for us. Thank you for joining us today, Tina. And crew, it looks like.
Yeah, we have a crew here. Thank you so much for having me. Tonight, I'm here to recognize artistic excellence by five community members who participated in this first salamander-inspired art exhibit called Signs of Spring. The exhibit was part of a larger festival, Salamander Days, an awareness campaign presented by the city of Marquette and Superior Watershed Partnership in partnership with the Peter White Public Library, Upper Peninsula Children's Museum, Moosewood Nature Center, and members of the community. So Salamander Days, our purpose is a collective effort by all of the groups to educate the public on the annual migration of the little blue-spotted salamander and the city's coinciding road closure at Presque Isle. And boy, did it bring attention to the matter. So I do need to say, you know, how do these things come up? With the Office of Arts and Culture, we receive people coming into the office on a weekly basis sometimes with the next big idea. You know, I'd like to celebrate BAC. I'd like to have an exhibit of my work. I'd like to do something with high schoolers and art. There's all lots of ideas, but this one unique idea came into our office last fall, and that idea was brought to us by Elizabeth Bates and Dan Barrington. And they were full of passion, and they came with a vision about celebrating the blue-spotted salamander in a festival. And at the center, at the core of that festival, would be using the arts to bring awareness to the environment, the whole, the life of the blue-spotted salamander and other signs of spring. So I really need to give a big thank you for a vision of community members for coming forth, but also helping us. And if they could just stand, we have Elizabeth Bates and Dan Barrington. It would not be a Salamander Days without those two. Would not have happened, and staff would not have been directed to do so much work for Salamander Days had those two not popped into our office. And so art has a big impact, and art is a great way to, if there's, can be a tool for us to share ideas and engage the community with ideas and things about our community that matter. And so having the Signs of Spring exhibit was really important. But we also did a lot of environmental education, so to speak to the actual salamander and the environmental education, I'd like to introduce Kathleen Henry. She is the Education Specialist at Superior Watershed Partnership and a great partner.
Thanks, Tina. Hi. So the Superior Watershed Partnership was happy to assist the city of Marquette with Salamander Days and the mission, which was to celebrate and spread conscientious awareness of the blue-spotted salamanders and other spring indicator species through educational programming, arts, and community engagement throughout the Marquette and greater Marquette community. As mentioned, between mid-March and mid-May, community members completed over 200 citizen science monitoring reports, an effort supported by the Superior Watershed Partnership, Northern Michigan University, and the city of Marquette. Success of Salamander Days and the seasonal road closure can be seen in the continued low mortality rate of the salamanders and from notes of appreciation from community members that they left on the citizen science monitoring reports, such as, "This was the best day ever. Thank you so much. I can't believe this happens here." We look forward to understanding more about these indicator species and to continue assisting the city of Marquette with projects that benefit local species, such as migratory birds and other pollinator species, such as and through coastal restoration work, too. So thank you very much.
And then next, I'd like to introduce Arts and Culture Office staff, Amelia Pruitt, our marketing and promotion staff, who really did a wonderful job putting the exhibit together and is here to introduce the award recipients.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, I'm Amelia Pruitt. I am the marketing and promotions staff over at the Office of Arts and Culture. And yeah, the natural phenomena of salamander migration is really interesting and inspiring, and we're so grateful to Superior Watershed Partnership to help us navigate the scientific aspects. But we wanted to give the community an opportunity to celebrate the salamanders without actually going out there and accidentally stomping any of them. So art communicates really large themes and allows spectators to engage with topics beyond a simple road closure sign. So when Dan came in with the idea of a massive salamander sculpture, we were really excited to see what other creative contributions people could come up with. The Signs of Spring exhibit is the first of a new series of community art exhibits here at City Hall. It's helping connect the city to its residents, and their contributions can adorn the walls of our City Hall. Our next exhibit is inspired by water, and that is in celebration of our Art Week theme this year of water. Art Week is next week, and we are still taking contributions to the exhibit. And you can drop off artwork to our Arts and Culture Center over at Peter White Public Library if you'd like to have your art here for the summer. Now, I'd really like to recognize the following individuals for their Signs of Spring artwork. Tough choices were made of an incredible array of art by a committee made up of myself, Kathleen, and our city manager, Karen. Each of these awards were inspired by the mission of Salamander Days. And now, I'd invite Mayor John Smith to come up and help us honor our artists.
Amelia?
Yeah.
Stand over on the other side, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, so the first one, we can, yeah, we can just start with this one. So this is awarding Laura Songer. And if Laura can come on up, each artist can come on up and accept your award. Oh, sorry, these are all on the board. There you go.
Congratulations.
And Laura Songer is awarded Best in Show for Environmental Impact for her piece, Watch Yeah, go ahead, and each artist can step aside. And then next, we'll start with Laura Haitala, and her piece is that blue, next one down. Yep. So Laura, unfortunately, is not able to be here tonight. She is downstate. But her piece, Blue Salamander, won both Best in Show for Local Relevance and the People's Choice Award. So we'll give a hand for Laura, even though she's not here. Up next, we have Susan Essler for her, oh, blue-spotted brooch. Yes. So Susan, if you are here tonight, go ahead and come on up. Susan is the recipient of Best in Show for Artistic Merit. Yeah, so this is a vitreous enamel brooch that it's a pin that you can actually wear. Very creative. Thank you for your contribution, Susan. Next one. Nope. Next up, we have Kitty Capell, and for her piece, Blue Spotted Magic, Kitty is the recipient of the People's Choice Award. All right, and last but not least, we have Lucas Grias here, and he is the recipient of our Youth Award. And that does it for our Salamander Awards. We're really excited to see the community art inspired by water over the summer. Again, if you have any contributions, drop them off at the Arts Center. And yeah, I think we'll maybe exit into the hallway for a group picture of the award winners.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that was a nice summary of Salamander Days, which was a new festival here in Marquette this past spring. Looking forward to that continuing into the future. We'll just give a moment for them to, they're moving out into the hall to take some photos here. All right, up next, we've got a presentation on the fiscal year 2021 audit by Mike Grents with Anderson, Tackman &amp; Company. This is item number four on the agenda. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mike. Nice to see you again. You know. Thanks for joining us tonight, Mike.
Yep. I might follow that.
There's still people at home watching online, I bet. And there's four in the audience still.
There we go. If you have questions, feel free to ask. We'll start short and small and see if anybody has questions and where we want to go from there.
All right.
Starting on page 19 is the opinion. So you have an unmodified opinion.
Of the big book?
The big book, yep. You complied with all the generally accepted accounting principles. It says they're your statements, not ours, and we take a sampling of transactions that we don't look at every single transaction. Flipping over to page 36, when you roll the city up in total, you have a net position of just over $73 million, which is an increase of just under $5 million from the year before. And it's kind of split equally between the business-type activities and the governmental fund activities. Looking at, just looking at the business-type activities, the biggest one there is coming from the sewer fund, which had a gain of about $1.4 million in the current year. And the main reason that fund had that much of a revenue is that's being offset by the debt payments. So that, the debt payments don't show as an expense in the fund. It's actually offsetting a liability. So that's when you look at the utility funds, you always have to remember those debt payments aren't showing as expenses, where when you look at the governmental funds, they do show as an expense. Lovely world of accounting. Looking at the governmental funds, looking at the big ones, is the general fund added about $100,000 to the bottom line. The major street fund added about $175,000. The local street lost about 200, and then the rest of it's kind of scattered with all the funds, a little bit here, a little bit there. In looking at the general fund, because that's the biggest player of the city always, if we go to the little book now, we can look at the first one here and looking at the cash balance and fund equity and benchmarks, and you can pretty much see over the last five years, it's trending down, a little less cash, less equity. Your fund balance is still above the 60- and 120-day expenditure benchmark, but you're slowly nipping away at that over time. And that kind of makes sense with what's going on in the city. The budget's getting tighter as time goes on, and the expenses are going up, revenues are kind of staying flat, and we can kind of see that in the budget when we look at it. That's where if we look at the next one, is looking at the different buckets over the last five years. And you can see, for the most part, everything is staying flat. You're not seeing big swings. You're not seeing increases. That if we kind of look at the back a little bit, is in 2017, you had about $19.5 million in revenue in the general fund. This year, you had $21.1 million in revenue in the general fund. So in all respects, when we kind of look at that and trend that out, you're staying flat. And that's a big thing as we're looking forward to some things. And that's where if we kind of look at the next chart here, looking at revenues and transfer in between this year and last year, but the biggest thing is taxes. Taxes in the PEL payment are 63% of the total revenue that's coming in the general fund. The next piece is state and federal sources, that's 17%. And then you get into charges for services, others, some transfers in. So that shows us again, everything's kind of staying stable, staying flat. And that's where you look at the next one here. Now we're looking at the general fund expenditures over the last five years. You know, general government's kind of staying flat, public safety is going up, no surprise there, public works is kind of staying flat, park and recs, others is staying flat. And the biggest one that you can see that has volatility is the transfers out. So the transfers out is where you're taking general fund money and moving it to some other fund to cover costs over time. fund to cover costs over time. And if we look at the, we'll, yep, yep, nope, it is the next one. Looking at the transfers out is, over the last five years, where is that money going? What funds? And the three biggest, well, let's just start, the biggest one's major and local street funds. So what's happening there is you're not bringing enough money in to do the projects that you're doing in those, on those street projects. And the general fund is subsidizing the street, major and local street funds. Next one here is Lakeview Arena. That's taking in and having a big transfer every year to support the operations of Lakeview Arena. The other funds is pretty small, Capital Projects is small. The next big one is debt service. You're spending a lot of monies getting transferred out of the general fund into the debt service funds. The debt service funds is where you're actually paying a lot of your bond payments and loan payments. So the general fund's having to move money into there to cover those. And those bond projects are covering a lot of the improvements within the city. So that's the big one. Enterprise fund, little bit. Internal Service Fund is getting a lot of transfers out or transfer into those funds. And a lot of that is, that's the motor pool, that's the service center of getting those up and running, finding the costs. They're not supporting themselves. And therefore, you're having to transfer the money from the general fund into those funds to cover those costs. And that's where if we look at the next graph here is, you know, on average, you're spending between the last two years is, last year, you had 18% of your total budget got transferred out to support other funds. This year, it was down to 11. You know, general government, you're about 22%, 23% each year. Public Works is about 19%. Public Safety is 38% to 43% of the total budget. So, you know, taking a lot of those things, when we look at the last five years, you can see where's that money kind of going out of the general fund. And that's where, if you look at the last page, is just kind of looking at it is, you know, expenses in 2017 were just under $19 million. This year was $21 million. But if you look at that $21 million, 2.2 million of it was transferred to other funds to cover the costs in other places. So that's where, over time, when we look at the budget, going back to the big book, and looking at page 149, you know, you're budgeting very well for what you have. And I think that's going to be the, one of the big things coming forward is living within that budget of, you know, the difference between your final budget and the actual, you were within $100,000 on revenue. And expenses is the same thing of, you were within $1 million on expenses. So when you look at that, you're budgeting very well for what you have. And that's going to be the thing, looking into the future, is where is your expense budget going to go? And then matching that up with the revenue budget going forward. That's always, that's the tricky part going forward. And we know costs are all going up across the board, so. And that's where, you know, your two biggest expenditures are debt payments and pension payments a lot of times. That's a big thing of paying MERS and the different pensions that are here. So you're locked into those two things. You don't have wiggle room with that, is those are locked in right off the top. With that, normally, I would go to the section on, do you have any findings? You don't have any findings, so that's always good. For those that want, if they want to go out to page 298, that's just kind of summarizing the audit. We didn't have any problems in the current year with the audit. I think it went very smooth, considering everything with COVID and getting over COVID and moving things around. We didn't have any disagreements with management. You know, what are some of the significant estimates in the audit report? What are some of the disclosures and some of the things to look at? You know, the biggest estimates is, you know, how long is your equipment going to last? Is always an estimate. Compensated absences, we estimate what that's going to be at the end of the year, but what is that final payout for those people going to be? The pension liability payments for the fire and police pension and the MERS plan, those are estimates. Those are always moving targets. Looking at those, and the post-employment health insurance, that's other, another moving target. What are those numbers going to be? And there's, those are some of the disclosures that, as you're looking forward and looking at the trend of, what is that doing over time? And this thing with, to keep in mind with the pension plans, it's a lot of that earnings in there is market-driven. So when the market goes down, your liability goes up. When the market goes up, your liability goes down because of the earnings and the future projections on that. Because I can remember roughly 10, 15 years ago, you know, everybody was fully funded, then the market tanked, and now everybody's underwater. So you have to make that up with contributions over time. That's the short version. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you, Mike. I have one question, then I'll open it up to the commission. So I'm looking at the small book here. This is, overtimes, the graph one, page one, since 2017, especially looking at our fund equity. I know we know this, but I'm going to ask for your take, and maybe it's not your role as an auditor, but I guess two questions. One, if we don't change anything, what would happen? I think we already know the answer to that.
Yeah. If you just look at the trend right here, you can see, and I'm just going to ballpark it in my head, is on average, between 17 and 21, you're losing $1 million a year. So if you didn't do anything and everything stayed flat, you're going to keep nipping away, and in nine years, it'll be gone. You'll have nothing left.
It just helps to hear it from an outside party, so, thank you. It's what we already know, but yeah, I appreciate that. And then my second question is, if you, I don't know if you followed our whole debacle, next week, we have a meeting, we have a special meeting to potentially increase taxes. Do you have a recommendation as an auditor, other than balance the books?
Balance? That's the tough one.
I know. I'm going to, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
That's fine.
It's basically increase revenue.
So I can't tell you what to do.
Or decrease expenses. I know the answer.
But what I can come over here, it, it comes down to that, is, and I've been, you know, the management, Marion, Karen have kind of reached out and looking at things. And, you know, one of the things I always say is, you start by looking at the budget. What are those fixed costs that you know you have to pay? Look at what is your current revenue source? And then theoretically, the difference is what you can spend on things. And you only have three options. Option one, increase revenue. Option two, decrease expenses. Or option three, find the balance. And that's where the hard part at the governmental level is, where do you find additional revenue? There's three places. Increase in taxes, increase in charges for services, or increase from state and federal agencies. We know state and federal agencies, they're in the same boat, so they don't want to give you anymore. So it's coming back to, you have those two places, increase in taxes or charges for services. The flip side is looking at expenses of, okay, what do we do here? Because a lot of times, what I'll recommend places to do is, do the revenue side first. Here's the pot we have to work with. Back out, here's what we have to spend, and then here's what's left. And then that's where the hard choice comes in of, okay, I can do this, or I can do this. Those are my two choices. So to make it on a smaller level, I'm going to go to like a township level, because they're smaller and there's less moving parts, is they have a fire department? And it's, okay, you can't support what you have, so you have two choices. You can go to the public and say, either let's have a tax or a service charge to fund the fire department, or we don't have a fire department. And then that's where the board steps in and says, okay, what choice do we go for? So, you know, making that a real simple example is, that's what you have here, but it's on a way more complex level of, okay, here's what we have, here's the choices we've had to make. And as a commission, you've had, you've made a lot of tough choices in the past, but as the budget is getting squeezed now, for all the various different reasons, you're having to start to make more and more of those decisions of, okay, which, what project outweighs which? What revenue source outweighs what of? Okay, if we want to do this, how are we going to fund that? And that's where it's coming down to, is it's a funding, almost like a funding mechanism of, where do we find the funding to do whatever project? Because a lot of your funding sources that you've had in the past are drying up now, that you don't have access to anymore.
That helps, thank you. It, you know, it just helps to hear from, you know, an objective perspective.
Yes.
Some thoughts on that.
Because I live in the city too, so on one hand, I don't want my taxes to go up. But on the other hand, I know from a financial standpoint, if I want services, somebody has to pay for it, and who is it? Or something else is going to have to get caught. And that's just the reality of life that we're in right now.
Thank you. I really appreciate that perspective. All right, other commissioners, questions? I'm never going to get that right. Commissioner Hill, I've backtracked about a year.
Yeah. On page 149, the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for the general fund.
Yep.
We're looking, we have four columns, for those who have to pull it up online. There's the 2020 actual GAAP basis.
Yep.
So when we're comparing, to compare last year to this year, you want to look at the actual GAAP basis, 2021.
Right. So the 2020 actual GAAP is last year's actual number. The 21 actual GAAP basis is this year's actual number. So those are the two columns that you want to compare side by side.
Okay. And what I see is that total property taxes are, actually went down very slightly.
Correct.
Could you explain how that would be when property values have gone up by so much?
Oh, that's a tou, that's a complicated one. But, how shall we put it? There's a lot of moving parts there. But where you start is, there's last year's, and then based off the assessing rolls, they say, here's how much it can go up or down based off all these other factors. But then two other big factors in there is, what new property tax values, what new construction is coming on that can add to that? Or what's coming off the rolls? And that's one of the big things, looking at what's here, is like the power plant going, that property tax value isn't going to be there in the future at the level it was. So that's where the roll can actually go down. Tax tribunals, you know, if you were in market township, and the big box store issues of, hey, we're getting X million of dollars for this building this year, goes to tax tribunal, they lower the value, it's now half of that in the future year. So you have that, and then, you know, there's other factors that play into it is, you know, you take some of the old facilities that are on the books of, where does that roll into all of that? The other thing that also happens is, what recaptures are out there, what's being recaptured of your property taxes? So, you know, the two big ones here are DDA and brownfield of, your taxable value and revenue may be going up, but all that additional revenue is being recaptured and going to those other buckets, so they're not going to the general fund at the end of the day.
Lots of moving parts, thank you. I just want to, so, so the difference, I just want to say, folks to understand, and you can see this on page 149, the total property taxes from 2020 to 2021, the difference between them is three tenths of 1%. That's how flat our revenue is, just on the property taxes. And then when you add it all up together, it, it still, it's just, it's, it's, it didn't go up. And, and so it's really very clear to me how, how we are in a situation where the revenues are, are not, even with, you know, going and getting grants. The other one that jumped out at me was the Board of Light and Power has gone down. The payment and lieu taxes went down $687,000.
Shooting from the hip on that one, that's where a few years ago, they changed the PIL calculation. And now you're seeing the other side of that, of how that got.
Karen may have something to add here.
Just for clarification, that 687, or 686,000, is actually the difference between what we had budgeted based off of the projections that BLP had provided us. But it did go down from the previous year closer to that 125,000.
I see, yep.
And that is a trend that is, it is occurring. It's based off revenues now, and their revenues are declining as well, so.
I see. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
No, sorry, just wanted to make clarification.
Yeah, the variance, I'm sorry, there's a variance column, and that's against budget, against what actually happened. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Which tells a whole nother story.
Yes, yes. And, so, yeah, and so we're in the position of, now, there is potentially money sitting, there's money sitting at the state, which I'm told, we will have, when the state budget gets all wrestled out, there might still be some funds allocated to us for this fiscal year, but that doesn't impact any of this, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's one of the things, looking forward, and I'm just going to inject with it, is, looking for pots of money is great, but realize those are one-time fixes. So what you always want to look at is, how can we sustain what we have over time? And those one pots of money are there to help with special projects, or construction, or purchasing something. That's where that, those one-time pots help. Because I know some communities, oh, we're going to get this pot, and that pot, and that pot, and they use it for operations, and then when it's gone, they say, ooh, well, now we can't afford that anymore. So that's one thing to be cognizant of, with the one pot of special monies coming in.
Other commissioners? Ms. Stonehouse?
Thanks, Mike, for a great presentation of making a very complicated subject, I think something we all can understand. And that's a particular skill, and I thank you for showing that. Do we do anything in here that captures brownfields of where we are with them, or the?
Let me look.
I'm sure you remember 295 pages.
Yeah. If, if we go to page 253. If, if we go to page 253, we kind of can look at this. And to kind of put it in perspective, before we even get into this, is, when I do this piece of the audit, the brownfield recapture, and these few statements here, that is what takes the most time with the city audit, to figure all the recaptures, and how it all interplays and works together. So this is the most complicated by far piece of the entire audit. So, looking at it, very generically, let's just put it that way. So if we look at page 253, and you'll see a receivable for developer obligations, $72.6 million. So what that, in essence, represents is, that's all the future tax recapture that you, the city, county, whoever the recapture's coming from, is going to have to recapture and pay back to the developers. Whether it's the actual developer, whether that developer is a third-party developer, is it the city itself, is it bond payments? So that's what it's kind of rolling into that. And if we kind of look at page, let's look at page 257, and what we're kind of looking at here is, in 2020, you had roughly 3.9 million of property taxes that were recaptured. In 2021, that number went up to $6 million. Of, that's money, that's property tax money that, without getting too far in the weeds, is, that was levied by another unit that was recaptured to pay back the brownfields. So some of that is your money, some of it's county money, state money, from there.
But do you in any way show the monies that would be received by the city at the point that all the obligations have been met?
No, we don't have that in here at all.
Okay.
Of what would that be? That's something we can kind of put together, because it is deep in our work papers, that we can kind of pull out and say, here would be the city piece of the recapture from a year to year.
I think it would be very useful, from the standpoint of looking ahead, to see where the value will be coming back to the city, once those other obligations have been met.
Mm-hmm.
And so, everybody can see the books.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, 200, I don't know, 50-odd pages, 290-odd pages, I think.
Yeah.
Quite complicated, quite detailed.
Mm-hmm.
The same thing with the charts that we've been using, again, very, very detailed and very understandable, so thank you for doing that. I have no further questions, Your Honor, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just agree with Commissioner Stonehouse, I think it would be helpful, especially as we head into, you know, potentially this special meeting on the budget and the millage rate on the 21st, this time next week, that we have access to some, some data and some projections, perhaps not from our auditor, but from city staff, on where we can expect those revenues from those brownfield projects to start coming in, and in what amounts, and in what years. I think that we've received some of that information in the past already, but I think it would be good to have a nice, simple chart that we can all look at, especially as we think about, what is the long-term fiscal future of the city? What do we, what do we think our operating millage needs to be? What do our expenditures need to be for, realistically, the next decade or so, until these brownfield funds start coming in in a large way? So, I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse on that. I don't, I appreciate all the work that you did, it's very informative, I think that, you know, we've spent a lot of, I always enjoy the audit presentations, and I think in the last few months, we've all spent a lot of time thinking about city finances and the city budget, so there's not a whole lot, a lot of news here, for any of us, I don't think. But I, I think that, you know, certainly the charts, and then also the, the raw data in this large book here, paint a pretty clear picture, that, you know, I've heard from a couple folks who, you know, say, wow, look, you should just, you know, cut the arts, or cut parks. And I think that besides the fact that, you know, that's not something that most people, I think, in Marquette want to see, at the end of the day, community services, right, is like 3% to 4% of our expenditures. You look at the charts, and, you know, the funding for parks and the arts, recreation is dwarfed by funding for basic meat and potatoes city services, like roads, streets, public safety, just paying our bills, right? The debt that the city has, these are expenses that we can't just forego. And, and so I think that we, as you said, we're at this point where we have to make some really tough decisions. So I hope people continue to contact us and come to that meeting on the 21st, but I think this was really helpful to have this presentation just a week before that, so thanks for providing some clarity.
Any other commissioners? Thank you, Mike, we really appreciate you joining us, and I guess we'll see you again next year.
Yeah. Unless you, and if you have questions as you're going through, and you want assistance or help, or questions, reach out.
We appreciate it.
That's what we're there for, so.
Thank you. Nice job. And thank you to city staff, nice job on a, in a successful audit with no findings, much appreciated. I have a lot of confidence in what we do there, so thank you. Okay, moving on to our public hearing, item number five, vacation of a portion of Center Street, this will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. On May 10th, 2022, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding a petition created by Northern Michigan University to vacate the portion of Center Street east of Prescott Avenue, and made the following motion. It was moved by M. Larson, seconded by A. Andres, and carried five to zero, that after review of the background information for 01-STR-05-22, the portion of Center Street east of Prescott Avenue vacation request, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed street vacation would not conflict with any intended municipal uses of the right-of-way, and hereby recommends the City Commission approve the street vacation as presented. The petition was considered by senior staff members of the Community Development Review Team prior to the Planning Commission hearing, and all reviewers recommended approval of the petition. The city engineer stated that if approved, meter pits must be located as near as possible to the east right-of-way line of Prescott Avenue, and that the transfer of ownership be at the last valve after the pit on the west/NMU side of the pit. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the Commission's May 31 regular meeting. Fiscal effect, no immediate effect, if this portion of Center Street is vacated and then acquired by Northern Michigan University, the city would no longer be obligated to maintain it, thereby reducing some fiscal responsibility. Recommendation, following the public hearing, concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the street vacation request and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution of street vacation. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address, this public hearing is now open.
John Taylor, 2050 Prescott Avenue, Apartment 26, Marquette. I believe this would be helpful to approve, if it would mean that NMU does take maintenance of this stretch of street. That would help financially, I believe, for the city, and it doesn't sound like it would cause any major traffic obstructions or significant issues. I, I see no reason not to approve this. I live about a mile from this area, I'm quite familiar with it, and I don't see any negative impact from my knowledge of it. Consider as you will, thank you.
Anyone else for this public hearing?
Margaret Brum, 4 East Magnetic Street, Marquette. I looked at the map, which is this page, this is the map I'm looking at, and I looked through the paperwork, both in the Planning Commission, and in the resolution, and the one-page document that is supposed to be executed tonight, assuming everyone agrees. And as a patent attorney, I look for what is written, and I look for what is not there. And this is a comment for, take it for what it's worth, there's no mention of the neighborhood in here being part of the most heavily contaminated land in the city of Marquette. Example, when Northern bought the property from the city to put up soccer fields and the adjacent parking lot, they had to sign a resolution, not a resolution, agreement with the state to not dig more than four feet into that property, because they put a cap over contaminated soil that was contaminated with heavy metal contamination that will not biodegrade no matter what. So that's the Northern property that I know about in the Freedom of Information Act documents that I read. To the, the same street, Prescott used to form the west boundary of the Cliff Tower property, and in fact, the most egregious environmental event that happened in recent times in 2011, in the back of one of the apartment complexes, I don't know if it's the one you live in, we had a particularly terrible incident where blue, blue wood tar came out of the ground and started oozing into that parking lot. And what I would have hoped to have seen was a clear sentence in there that says, the city will vacate Center Street, and Northern will take upon all responsibility for that property, up to and including environmental responsibility. Because I really don't want to have happen in later times, is for somebody to have an oozing problem, and I'm not making fun of it, there's nothing funny about this. Or for them, they decide right now, they're not going to do anything with it, but things change, and if they start digging in that property, it's adjacent to heavy metal contaminated property. And I've got all the documents, didn't bring them with me tonight, but I'm not saying anything the city doesn't already know. I would recommend that this document be slightly reworded, to the effect that Northern takes the property with all the environmental responsibility for it. Otherwise, there's a question of, did the city hide anything? Should the city have made it clear that this was adjacent to two negative environmental impacts that are still under observation? And I'm not an environmental lawyer, I cannot speak to the environmental legal part, I'm just an attorney, when I do a transaction, and there's a material fact that it doesn't present in any of the paperwork, I always raise my hand and say, shouldn't we put this in writing that everybody knew at the time, that this was potentially an issue with this property going forward? Thank you for your consideration of my comment.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Anyone else? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Ms. Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion and concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the street vacation request, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution of street vacation.
And do we have a second on the motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, certainly, the, the transfer has been documented and researched by both the legal team at Northern, as well as our attorney, so I am very comfortable that that side of the equation has been covered.
Ms. Bonzel, any discussion?
None, Your Honor.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
Well, could the city attorney address the question that was raised about liability long-term for this property?
So this is merely a street vacation, this is a platted subdivision, and the statute, state statute, lays out how that functions. And basically, there's a procedure, but, you know, we can either vacate it, or we can't. I mean, that's kind of the, the state statute on it. All that does, excuse me, is, it takes it out of our system, and is no longer a street that we have to maintain, and automatically, under that statute, the ownership transfers to NMU without a deed or anything else happening, simply because we've taken it out of our ownership. It would still be preserved on the plat as a, excuse me, as a private right-of-way, unless NMU decides to take action to modify the plat. But this is, you know, this is basically being done the way the statute requires us to do it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the Commission? All right, seeing no further discussion, this does require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please conduct that for us?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Up next, we have item six, our consent agenda, this also will require a roll call vote. Commissioners, we have a motion on consent. Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote on consent?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Up next, under new business, we have one item, it's item seven, appointment of city assessor. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager recommends the appointment of Dulce Ranta to the position of city assessor effective May 23, 2022. The city assessor is an administrative officer position under the Charter and City Code. The city charter provides that the city manager appoints administrative officer positions subject to confirmation by the City Commission. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of former city assessor Miles Anderson on March 31st. Dulce is a Michigan master assessing officer, has been in the assessing field for 18 years, and has worked in local government for over 23 years. She serves as an instructor for the State Tax Commission for programs to advance assessors to the next level of certification. Fiscal effect, the FY 2021-22 budget has sufficient funds to cover this appointment. Recommendation, confirm the city manager's appointment of Dulce Ranta as city assessor effective May 23, 2022. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we confirm the city manager's appointment of Dulce Ranta as city assessor effective May 23, 2022.
And do we have a second? Ms. Davis?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion, Commissioner Bonzel?
None, other than that, Ms. Ranta seems incredibly qualified, I mean, we literally have person training other assessors as our assessor, I think that's probably a good sign, so I think she'll do a great job.
Commissioner Davis, anything to add?
I just think that we're very fortunate to find someone with Dulce's credentials, and someone who knows our community well.
Any other discussion from the Commission? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 opposed. Motion passes five to zero. Up next, we have our second public comment session of the evening, three minutes, name and physical address, unless you've already stated it at this meeting. Anyone for public comment?
Margaret Brum, and I'm here to talk politics. Last November, there was a meeting called for the Monday after Thanksgiving, there was supposed to be a work session in advance to discuss a potential development of an area, I'm going to say at the intersection of McClellan and Wright Street, I don't have the lot numbers. That developed into a fully packed room, where the, the public, the work session never had a chance to take place, because the public comment started in the work session and continued for the first full hour of the actual meeting. And instead of approving the developer's request, the Commission voted 7-0 to deny the developer's request, and then the residents were guided in the process of taking the zoning of this property out of, I forget the status it was in, but it is now in a conservation, recreation easement, easement's the wrong word, again, I apologize. Essentially, at the last meeting, the matter was brought up to confirm the rezoning as petitioned by the residents, recommended and approved by the Planning Commission, and presented to this Commission. At that time, one commissioner, Commissioner Hanley, I'm reading from the notes here, said there are real concerns in the community about affordable housing, and noted that the city has expended resources to prepare these parcels for future residential development. She says she thinks it would be irresponsible, in light of that, to essentially remove these parcels from the city's surplus property list via rezoning. She said she will vote no, as she thinks the Commission should keep its option open as far as this property is concerned. Back in November, during, I think it was the first public hearing of the, of the actual meeting, I made a comment to this Commission that said, if the Commission decided to ignore the will of the residents who were in the room at this time, we could be talking recall, because it was overwhelmingly against this development. And I was very pleased that night that the Commission listened to the residents, and guided them through the process of the rezoning. Now, I like to think I'm a person of my word, and I like to think that I remember what I said, and in terms of Commissioner Hanley being the only person on the Commission who voted against the rezoning, I had a big decision to make, and that was whether I go behind the scenes and start a recall process. And I've discussed it with a number of people, and I've decided that, based on the Commissioner's term of office not being forever, and that there are serious things going on, that I will not be instituting a recall process against Commissioner Hanley at this time. I will, however, be stating at every public comment session from now until the time she is no longer in office, what happened that night and what she said. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
John Taylor, 2050 Prescott, 26. Again, as we move forward and will be considering the capital improvement plan, I know that frequently views get very emotional, sometimes hot-headed. A lot of people worry about what will happen to my view to the acreage around me. Any development is eventually going to block someone's view. There's no way around it. It is worth it, in my opinion, keeping the community intact. But as we move forward, we need to remember that we do have to develop a property tax base based on what the audit had said. And I would say, you know, hmm, a multi-story residential building would actually help with that quite a bit. And I would be mindful to the city that fixing this problem could also add to financial solvency in the future. And, you know, perhaps I'm biased because my view is that of a beautiful toxic landfill. But I think there's no sight quite so lovely as people living in security when it comes in terms of considering the view. And I would ask the city respectfully to consider that aspect in this. I know that religion and politics are normally kept separate, but as I learned at my father-in-law's synagogue, there's a verse, I can't say it quietly in Hebrew, but he ne'matohu'um natiim, and it would mean how good and pleasant it is for people to dwell together in brotherhood. I would like to see that, to build trust. If we can build together in brotherhood, we will have a remarkable community, not just the largest in the region, but the crown jewel of a state. It's our chance to lead Michigan as a whole in the direction for economic rebirth and urban renewal in a constructive way. And I would ask us to truly build for that, for urban renewal, not gentrification. It would be foolish not to develop the shoreline to its maximum commercial potential. It would be equally foolish not to develop affordable residences. I know Verity in the past has said, "We don't build developments that lose money." How long are they going to stay profitable when there's no one to clean those hotels? Because at this point, a 40-mile round-trip commute every day is not financially viable for the price paid. I would ask this Commission respectfully to consider this, and that we could continue working forward together from a position of trust and respect as neighbors in that sphere of brotherhood. I thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Brings us two comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Hill.
Thank you. Another request in terms of as we prepare to talk about our financial situation going forward. The graph four of the small book has the general fund expenditures, and there is one area that has gone up 20% every year as other areas have remained flat. So I would, and I'll talk to the city manager more, but I wanted to flag that as an area of particular concern of what's driving those numbers up so high when other areas have been so flat. That is a question I have. And then I, because I think, I think I have a good understanding of our revenues, but what I don't have a good understanding of yet is our expenditures. And I will be meeting with the city manager about that coming up. And then, congratulations and a profound thank you to the gentleman who saved that woman's life. That was really a very moving, brief but very moving experience, and I'm really grateful that we had that opportunity. Thank you for making that recognition possible. I think that's very, very important. And I am looking forward to further conversations about housing. And I know we're going to be focusing on public properties, and that, while government can't tell, of course, private folks what to do, I would very much like to see what private property housing is being developed in relation to the public properties we will be considering. To see only the public and not the private, and not have a comprehensive view of what's coming is to only look at half of the equation. So for our conversation to come, I think it's really, really important that we see all the development projects that are being proposed and have a clear understanding of where they are, how many people they think they're going to serve. I know we can't predict what the prices are because unfortunately, you know, when housing costs, housing construction costs, I'm hearing are pretty consistently $300 a square foot, making it very challenging. But it would be very, again, very, very helpful to see both the public stuff proposed and the private stuff proposed, just so we can get an understanding of the entire comprehensive look at the city. And aren't the lilacs lovely this year? Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good session tonight. Certainly a great audit, good detail on it, and certainly an opportunity, I think, to give us a little deeper dive as we move into the decisions we'll have to make concerning budget. We had the pleasure of having a cruise ship in the last Thursday. It will be back on the 23rd. And if anybody wants to go down and take a good look at it, it should be arriving usually about 8:00 in the morning, maybe a little bit before that, and usually remaining till about 8:00 at night. And while you can't go aboard this vessel, you certainly can get an appreciation for what a small Great Lakes cruise ship really looks like. For example, their maximum passenger load is about 200 with about 85 crew, and I think when they were in Marquette, they were about 110 people. So really, a little boutique operation that allowed 110 people to explore the city of Marquette. They certainly spend some money, too, as well as an opportunity to provide some dock fees to the city for the pleasure of doing so. I would point out that we do have a work session coming up this Wednesday, I believe, Your Honor, and that'll be at 5:15 PM, focusing on city surplus property. And I think that'll be very revealing when we have a chance to go through all of the appropriate material. I would offer three cheers for salamanders. Certainly, they become a little token of the city, I guess, and we have to, have to enjoy that. Lastly, though, on a very serious note, it was very pleasurable tonight to be in the company of three authentic American heroes. And those are people whose courage we need to recognize and we need to celebrate because they are truly, I think, a special, a special breed of person would do that, understanding that a fireman prepares to do that. That's what he trains to do. A police officer trains to go into very dangerous and difficult situations. But when you, as a private citizen, see the danger and just do it, that takes a special amount of gumption and a special amount of courage. And to see them here and to hear their story, I think, was very uplifting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A lot of what I was going to say has been said. I would just note that the city is facing some, you know, significant challenges right now as a, as a community with our budget, with not having adequate revenue just to essentially maintain existing city services, and also with affordable housing and the livability of our community. I think it's critically important that we find the right balance here. I'm certainly excited about the special meeting on Wednesday night, which will be here at 5:15 PM, where we will be discussing surplus city property. And we'll be looking at a few, you know, offers that people, various people have put in for city-owned property, but also, I hope, having a larger discussion about what we want to use that surplus property for. And I think that developable city-owned properties, to the greatest extent possible right now, given the, both the budgetary issues we're facing with our tax base, but also the affordable housing issues we're facing, should be prioritized for workforce housing development, affordable and low-income housing development. And I hope that we can have more discussion about that on Wednesday. But I think in solving, in doing our part to solve this housing affordability problem, we have to focus primarily on what we can control. We control these properties right now, and we do have a lot more influence over how they get used in the future than over private properties, like the former hospital property, for example. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. And just wanted to flag that if people are concerned or interested in housing issues or in the future use of city-owned property, that would be a good meeting to attend this Wednesday at 5:15. And then I think I, I just wanted to correct myself. I misspoke earlier in the meeting and said that our meeting on the budget would be on the 21st, I believe, and somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it will be at 5:15 on the 22nd.
It's on the 21st?
It's on the 21st at 5:15. Okay, thank you.
You were right the first time.
I must have accidentally bumped my calendar notification over. So it's Tuesday, June 21st at 5:15 PM. And I think if you're concerned about the city budget, you have thoughts on, you know, do you want us to have to cut services? Do you want us to not? What your thoughts are on the budget? That would be an informative meeting to attend, and I will be sharing some more information on Facebook about the budget and about surplus property and housing affordability in the next week. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I will be real quick. We've talked a lot about these two documents, and city manager, maybe, I don't know if these are available to the public on the website, but you might want to mention that, if anyone wants a deep dive into our budget, and, which is very important in understanding as we look at the 21st, which is next Tuesday. And that's all I will have. Thank you.
Two things. I just wanted to thank Chief Grimm for bringing the lifesaving efforts presentation to us today. It's my understanding those three gentlemen did not want to be recognized, and you had to do some convincing, so that just speaks even more to their heroic efforts and humility. And thank you for convincing them to come because I think it was a special moment. Appreciate it. The last thing I wanted to say, because everything else has been covered, is on Saturday, I was able to attend the, I believe it was the first-ever UP Pride Fest, even though it was pouring rain. And it was a fantastic event down at Lower Harbor with a lot of folks celebrating diversity and inclusion. And I am really excited to see that that was able to happen here in the city of Marquette. I'm proud of the work that was done to make that happen. So thanks to all the staff who've helped with that. And I know we've had, we had a strong police force to make sure the folks felt safe, and it felt very safe and welcoming down there. So thank you.
All right, I'll move it over to our city manager, Karen.
Yes. Exciting meeting tonight. But I just wanted to touch on the audit report real quick because you will see that while we look like we ended in a small positive, it was actually resetting that clock, which is a big thing for us. We worked really hard to get to that point for fiscal year '21, and we're working hard to, you know, maintain that momentum through '22 and then going into '23, fiscal year '23 budget preparation. So while that is a plus for right now, the, the future is, is truly something we need to be focusing on and addressing as soon as possible. And fortunately, we are in the position where we are right now, where we have a moment to do that and to really think about this and, and carefully move forward with, with recommendations. So I'm looking forward to the 21st and having that discussion, and then also being able to move forward from this. As you mentioned, the special meeting is going to be on Wednesday, the 15th, at 5:15. Because it is a special meeting, it will be broadcasted, and you can see it on the YouTube channel. So I wanted to make that clear. If you are not able to attend, you will be able to see that. Same thing with the 21st as well. That is a special meeting, and if you cannot attend, you can watch that, and, and it will be broadcasted as well. So again, Wednesday at 5:15, and then Tuesday, the 21st, at 5:15 as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
At 7:21 PM. Thanks, everyone.